Good evening, everybody. This is a call to order of the Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for December 17, 2024. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here as well. We don't have a scheduled public appearance, but we have an unscheduled public appearance. We are going to be receiving an award this evening if we have a guest in our audience, perhaps. If you don't mind, come right up. If you sit in the chair there, it looks like your microphone are on.
Absolutely.
Welcome, Aspen Council.
Thank you, thank you. I come before you guys today to present an award to the city of Aspen for outstanding accomplishment Coke Park Pedestrian Connection Project, a project led by the city's engineering department with exceptional effort of Tim Carf, Wyatt Young, Jack Denenberg alongside Escavation Services, Inc. as their contractor Justin Noonan. This represents exemplary achievement in parks and trail category for a small community population of 25,000. To go into a little bit more detail, the Coke Park Pedestrian Connection Project showcases innovation, collaboration, and unwavering commitment, sustainability, accessibility, and community engagement. The project achieved several significant milestones. Approved accessibility by selling ADA client sidewalks and ramps, the project created a continuous pedestrian corridor enhancing connectivity and safety for residents and visitors alike. Sustainability integration for electrical vehicle charging stations, including two ADA van accessibility stations, were incorporated aligned with Aspen's sustainability goals and its EV master plan. Collaborative excellence. This project brought together multiple city departments, local businesses, and residents to ensure minimal disruption and maximum impact. This project is a shining example of excellence in public works, demonstrating how thoughtful design and collaboration can enhance the quality of life for an entire community. As the Western Slope APWA Chair, I'm especially proud and an exceptional project for our region, and that they finally brought one home to the Western Slope. It's great news. On behalf of the Colorado After, I want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to the city of Aspen and all the individuals involved in their vision, dedication, and leadership in the public works excellence. I would like to see Tim Carf, Wyatt Young, and Jack Denenberg please come up and present your award. Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Just to add a little to that, so Mr. Wallace, who just presented the award, is the Road and Bridge Superintendent with Montrose County, correct? But also the American Public Works West Slope Chair. The award is, as he said, recognition for excellence in a single project that's over there. But it's hard to call this a single project because of so many aspects that were involved. Over 500 feet of new sidewalk, the ADA ramps that were discussed, four new electric vehicle plugs, pedestrian safety and connectivity improvements. So we really appreciate the recognition for it, and we want to say to our team, you guys, thank you for such a great job over there. If you haven't over to see what's been done at Coke Park, please get by over there. It's a great improvement. You know, it's such an interesting area. No sidewalks along the curb. Events and the gatherings that happen in Coke Park are going to be served so much better by what's going on over there. So again, one more round of applause for our staff, but. And thank you for being here to present the award. That will bring us on our agenda tonight to citizens' comments and petitions. This is an opportunity for eyes that are not scheduled for a public hearing. Tonight, we have two items as action items, and these are both setting title of charter amendment for ballot questions. They are set as action items. There's no public comment during those readings. So if you are here commenting on Resolution 146 or 147, I'd ask that you do those comments during this portion, the public comment. I do have a timer. I will be running that timer. We try to limit comments to about three minutes so everybody has a fair and equal opportunity to be heard. So are there any members of the public that wish to comment this evening? I see Peter first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And everyone that attends tonight, I just wanted to come in and speak with you briefly. As you all know, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and when I took on that role, oh, I'm sorry, Peter Fornell, and I'm sorry, I should have done that. When I took on that role with the Historic Preservation Commission, knowing what I know about local government and the way things work, I saw a fit to hire my personal IT assistant to create for me an individual email address for purposes of communication back and forth with any of the board members, any of the city staff, all of the people that were concerned with all of the work we do at HPC. You know, I know that you guys know probably ad nauseam that frequency of CORA requests are getting larger and larger, and the task associated with those things done in a timely fashion with our legal staff who does a very good job with it is put to the test. You know, I knew coming in that was a possibility, and that's why I did that. But the majority of the members of our board didn't know what a CORA request was, and they had communications on multiple fronts with city staff, with one another, and the cuspion of information and deduction of that information in order to make its way out to the requesting parties for those CORA requests exceeded two weeks, and I know it's supposed to take 72 hours. You know, Luisa and Kate did a really great job in trying to help everybody along there. Fortunately, I was able to give mine in about five minutes because I saw the writing on the wall would be a possibility someday. You know, in the interest of working better for our city staff, in the interest of running smoother government, I'm going to again request that there's about 30 volunteer board members on our various volunteer boards with the city, and I don't know what we've got is a number of state employees, but I'm sure north of 300, and all of them have an email address. You know, I'm paying for mine myself, but I still see a tremendous benefit in producing email addresses, whether they're called City of Aspen or whatever, for the purpose of containing public information that needs to be disseminated and to get back at it in an easy fashion. And, you know, I'm paying $200 a year to my IT guy, which isn't a problem for me at all. I don't mind. But I'm certain that the city of Aspen, for those 30 staffers, could do it for less. And if it was $100 per person per year to have an email address for all of the volunteer board members, that's $3,000 a year, and I'm hopeful that somewhere inside our $170 million budget, you guys can find $3,000 to streamline that effort on behalf of your legal team that works harder than they needed to work to get that request presented to the party requesting it. And I expect it'll only continue, and out of the interest of a clear path for everybody, I hope that you can take that request into consideration again.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I think that's a great idea. Everyone supportive of having staff look into that and report back to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Peter.
Then the only thing I've got left to say is thanks, Jim Tru, for a fantastic job you've done all these years, been approachable, and it's been the community's luck and service to have you be part of our town, and I want to make sure and take my hat off in appreciation to all you've done. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, guys. Thanks. Other members of the public for public comment this evening? Scott, I saw you next. Paul, I'm sorry, I'll get to you. Scott?
In the interest of saving you all the time, I've prepared some comments. So good evening, Mayor Torrey, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, and thank you, full room of Aspen residents, for being able to see this more often. My name's Scott Woolley, and I'm here tonight as a born and raised Aspen local who cares deeply about our community and its future. When I was 12 years old, the preferred alternative for the entrance to Aspen was approved. That was 26 years ago. Since then, it seems like we've seen nothing but inaction, roadblocks, and loss at times by special interest groups determined to stop the process and determined to not resolve the issue. This gridlock has left our community stifled, disenfranchised, unable to resolve one of the most important infrastructure challenges that we face. I don't care about any particular plan. I'll say that again. I don't care about any particular plan. For me, this is about trusting the people of Aspen to decide their own future. The voters are capable, thoughtful, and fully deserving of a say in this matter. This isn't a decision for attorneys from Denver or groups with hidden agendas to dictate. It's a decision that belongs to the people of Aspen. Aspen has always been a place of bold ideas and visionary leadership. We set ourselves apart by making decisions for the great good, and we can do it again. But that will only happen if we trust in democracy and allow the people to have their voices heard. This legislative initiative, Resolution 147, is about breaking free from 26 years of indecision. It's about moving beyond divisive politics and lawsuits so we can focus on what Aspen does best, thinking big, and setting an example for other communities around our state, our country, and the world. Aspen deserves progress. Let's respect the intentions of the voters and put this issue on the ballot with a loud democratic play out as it was meant to. I thank you all for your time, and I welcome any questions, comments, and concerns you might have.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks. Nice to have you here. I thought it would be, how does the city of Aspen get a voice when we unilaterally cede control to CDOT?
It's the voice. The voice is the choice to do so.
Okay, so to be clear, what you're proposing is asking voters to unilaterally cede control of any entrance and solution to CDOT. So without discretion, any future entrance to Aspen solution, any variations of what may have been approved already. So not a choice in a specific solution, but a choice in giving total discretion to CDOT.
I believe that that's what a democracy means.
Thank you.
Congressman, good. I appreciate something good.
Mayor, Council. Hi, my name is Paul Anderson. I'm with you before your gift, actually. I'm not asking anything. Last winter, I wrote a 10-part series for Aspen Journalism About Community. The piece is very informative for me after 40 years of journalism in the Valley because I got a regional perspective from it. So I decided to make it into a book, and it's here. I'm giving it to the council members because I think it's probably the most coherent cohesive writing today on what regional mean for us in the Valley. I come from this perspective after, as I said, 40 years of journalism in the Valley here. Before that, I lived in Crested Butte, where I ran this paper there, and watched the town fight a mining company called AMAX, the Save the Lady campaign, pit town against an industrial giant mining company, and the town rose up and said that it would not be Thomas Griffiths. 300 people living in that town then, and I got a sense of community there that was very powerful and inspiring. I brought that sense to Aspen as well. So I come from a very sort of impassioned embedded interest in community, and I know it's different for everybody, but this book, I think, really contains some messages and ideas that are worthwhile. So Merry Christmas.
Thanks so much.
Paul, what's the title of the book?
In Search of Community.
In Search of Community, and is it available for others to get locally or online?
Yes. My idea is to print it for free and hand it out as a free gift to the community. There will be conversations around the community, and just to keep the... Last week, that the idea is percolating about 60 people in the room. Word was there. And so I just think it's instrumental to keep in mind that community is of value, and we can cultivate it in better ways, I think. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Pleasure to see you. Other members of the public for the comment this evening, I'm going to take the gentlemen that are sitting, and then Anne.
Guys, ladies. My name is Bob Dylan, resident of Chateau Choumont. We got a notice a month ago that the W Hotel is proposing to do a tent over their roof deck, and I understand that that was withdrawn, but I figured we could comment on it on some of the issues that we've been having with the W Hotel over the years. I represent a crumb of all the five buildings around it, Chateau Choumont, Dumont, Glory Hole, Alps, and the Little Mill condominiums. It makes up of 151 different condominium units. We had issues and had some meetings with Mr. Zappa and Jim Tru. We had a go-around a couple of years ago in trying to voice our concern over the noise and, you know, being a good neighbor, which the W had initially professed that they were going to be a good neighbor with the community because in 2018, we went and attended all the meetings on the development of the W Hotel. And I will say that the good neighbor aspect has not really gone through at all. We want to address before anything moves further on a potential wet deck on top of the W. We've got 151 units that have all consolidated to enroll scientists to kind of go against this because we've had a number of conversations about the noise and some of the parking issues, the point of not really honoring the wet policy, that that was supposed to be a free pool because it was initially built on public land. So we've had, you know, we met with Jim Tru and CJ Allender and Jim Omeroy, you know, in council chambers to explain everything that was going on, and for a little while, the music's kind of come, the noise factor seemed to be a little bit lower, and now it seems like it's ramping again. So we just want to make the council aware. I know this thing is, the permit has been pulled, but if it does come up again, we're going to have a forum of quite a few people that are going to lobby quite hard against that. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim. I'm retired. I recently retired myself. It's kind of nice. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Bob.
To go to Anne.
Thanks. Anne Mullins. First, again, to Jim, I've been at council meetings for a long time, that side and this side, and I've always really appreciated your presence and your counsel, and you will be greatly missed, and thanks for everything you've done for the city and me. I'll say the county, too. You know, I'm mostly concerned. The other thing, I'd say, Tori, I love your hat. That is great. So I'm here to support the approval of 47, which is adding Section 13.15 to the city charter. You know what it is, just for people listening. Granting of use of portions of Merleton Thomas properties as identified in the 1998 entrance Aspen Record of Decision for future state highway 82 realignment. I am part of the committee which circulated the petition and gathered signatures, and whether the petitioners support or do not support the solution, it's time to put a vote. Anecdotally, we all have heard lots of people for and against this solution, but we haven't had a definitive answer since the vote in 2001. It was 25 years ago. A lot of things have changed. We don't have to go into all the different things that have changed, and even the most recent changes. And there's also quite a lot of information about entrance. Several years ago, the city did a very comprehensive public outreach about the entrance to Aspen. U.S. Council have done quite a few studies in the last few years. So there's a lot of information out there, and I think the voters are well informed at this time, well enough informed to put on this. A vote for or against the charter amendment will direct council to move forward with the decision. All that said, I do support the preferred alternative for many reasons. I won't start campaigning now. I'll wait to see if it gets on the ballot. Lastly, if for some reason this ballot issue is not approved, I would urge council to reconsider the ballot review at the September 3 meeting. That was Resolution 111, Option 1, which would have put the entrance to Aspen on the March ballot. Ideally, this is the way a representative democracy should work, listening to other representatives, acting on that, and then allowing that to give you direction. Thank you.
You know, we have this as an action item later, so there'll be time for some comment. But I just, I want to just quickly respond in brief is that, you know, I agree with you. It'd be wonderful if we had the accurate information out there about the alternatives that do exist. I don't think we do have that. You know, we, at this council table, starting with the previous council and then with numbers as well, we embarked on a process to address the entrance to Aspen that was going to be community inclusive and that was really geared to a process to get us to some best solutions. There are changed conditions on this. So, you know, for me, it's unfortunate. I think that this ballot question, you know, has pieces to it that we'll discuss later, but it may be a little untimely. And I know that there's other people that are supportive of the preferred alternative that would like to get that alternative done, but really what we're trying to do is create a public process and involve the community and go through the EIS for a revaluation. So I wish it was as clean and simple, but it's not. And so I just really wish that we could go through the process that we're in and not be asking questions on our ballot that really are kind of the public may be uninformed about.
And can I respond to that?
Yes, sure.
Important then, myself individually, or people that support the preferred alternative. I think what I'm supporting is that it's time for the community to weigh in and make a decision.
Which is the process that we're in, you know, the city process that we're in, and it's in the ballot box. I just, I'm not sure I agree, but that's okay. We'll have more discussion later. Thanks, Anne. Bill?
Just to briefly touch on Anne's point about an informed electorate, you wouldn't believe the number of people that reached out to me today going, is it really true that if this plan is enacted, people coming from Cemetery Lane and McLean Flats, most of these people being Cemetery Lane residents, will have to turn into town and come into town through two lights to then exit town? So I wouldn't consider that an informed electorate, considering many of these people are full-time, year-round voters, residents of Aspen, and had no idea that that was a critical, immovable part of this plan. So I totally disagree with you there, and I don't think the electorate is well informed, and I think that this ballot is an inappropriate place to ask.
Again, can I respond? As I said, and especially to go back, look at the original decision, that was an incredibly comprehensive process in 98. Now, it is 20, over 26 years old. As I said, the city did a very, very intensive, comprehensive outreach, and I think it was before you were on, so a few years ago. You guys have, almost every council meeting, there's some discussion about Jacob Zentner Dearing doing another study, someone else making a comment. I mean, it's been in the papers a lot. It's on APR. It's, yes, there are probably people that are still uninformed, but it's not that tough to be informed. The resource is out there. If they feel they're lacking information, that information is there.
Anne.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Griffin, part of the Neighborhood Alliance that up referenced 83 minutes. I'm here to seek your help to stop the W Hotel from parking in the well-posted fire lane at Spring Street used by fire trucks for homes buying the W and EMS to access the ski patrol to bottom term in Aspen Els Park. While well-known issues, hundreds of reported violations to the city, multiple meetings between city officials and W, demand for a compliance letter from the city attorney and lots of tickets, this large, non-local business continues following their own playbook. Number three, when vehicles on Spring Street completely blocked the Aspen ambulance, police officers told me an ongoing problem. Ski patrol at the time mentioned the W regularly obstructs access, and I request the city's input from EMS, ambulance at AVH, and the Aspen Fire Department. And only time, on March 10th, five W cars in the fire lane completely blocked the ambulance in the morning and afternoon when two EMS vehicles were assisting a severely injured skier at Aspen Park, the W parked their next car in the fire lane. The root cause is that the W uses its three designated loading zones for other purposes, forcing loading vehicles to park in the urgency lane. Duran Street loading zone is used for permanent large and parking. The larger Spring Street loading zone is converted into a rarely-used bar with tables and some of the spaces for long parking, and the smaller Spring Street space is too often used for parking versus loading, plus has the capacity for just one or two cars. The operative documents for the redevelopment expansion were very specific on loading versus parking areas, highlighting the importance of the largest loading zone, which is now a bar, as snow plowing is required, including moving the snow off-site for continuous access for loading. Had the W been honest with its intent to use the designated loading zones for other uses, including changing the zoning without public comment on Duran Street and the largest zone, largest loading zone, which is now a bar, its approvals would have been denied for both aesthetic and safety reasons. Due to time, I will submit the relevant operatives' section in writing. Unless the W, unless the W uses three designated loading zones for the intended purpose, including the space on Duran Street, Spring Street will continue to be a parking lot. I ask the city council to enforce immediately Ordinance 39 Series 2014-15.1, which addresses the W loading zones and Spring Street fire lane. Also enforcing W subdivision agreement 3.1D and 3.3.6F, which addresses W parking and loading zones. Also, given history, I ask the city to require public comment for all W Hotel zoning changes. So again, we don't convert something that is required for public safety into a bar. And I end with a big thanks to the many city officials who have attempted to end the W parking in the fire lane. They have been great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your persistence on this, an concerning issue for you and for me as well. You know, it's a joke up here, but I've suggested the city purchase a tow truck so that we enforce such things. And I think the last thing I'd like to hear is that an ambulance can't get out because parking isn't being enforced properly. But I do believe that if we towed a few cars or booted a few cars, the issue would stop pretty quick. So I can't imagine the general manager of the W have explained to his guests that their car was towed or booted because...
Most of the time, it's W car. I can send you pictures, so it's...
It would hinder operate.
I presume, I would probably say something. I'm a certified red card fighter, forest firefighter, so I know the importance. I live behind the W, so my passion is, if the fire, and I haven't seen the fire trucks on before, I'd want them waiting for that to rearrange their cars.
Totally understood. So I'm supportive of aggressive message saying action on this.
Hundreds of violations, hundreds.
Got it, Ken. Thank you so much. I'd encourage the others up here to join me in requesting aggressive action on this.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
John, I don't want to use this forum as a back and forth between you and the neighbors. Okay. Jim, or we have received emails in regards to this going back months. We get, update us to contact that's been made with the W, corrective measures that have been taken, and yet we find ourselves back here with neighbors expressing their concerns. What is the current status of the area that is being utilized for this parking?
We're looking at each other. We've both been working on this, as Mr. Riff mentioned, parking department, the city attorney's office, the police have all worked hard with the W to try to make sure that there is compliance with our rules and regulations. Ticketing is done when it is observable violation, and that is why it ultimately becomes difficult. Communication with the ambulance district, the fire district, and we're trying to do the best that the city can to address, address the issues as they exist now and try to improve the situation as best we can. I don't know if either has anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. John, you want to come up?
Yes.
Thank you.
John, sorry, one of the co-developers of the property. It's important to make just a couple notes and then ask permission to do something. First of all, it is a tough street, but I know because of the complaints, many of the incidents, particularly with the ambulance, have nothing to do with W. It's the Nell and its others. It's just a compressed area. The Nell has a loading dock there, and that's the biggest problem today for the ambulances. And their loading dock is never going to change right. So what my request to you is, clearly, when all those plans were put together, it was not a good program for how do you park a hotel in that area. It just isn't. So I'd like to work with your planning department, engineering department, and come up with a better plan. Simply what we've learned today, make that to the ambulance area. It should never be challenged, parked in the east hill. So we'll do whatever we can to keep that clean, if you will, or open. But just so you know, there are a lot of other cars that get parked over there. It's not just us on the street, but we can do our part. I've been speaking with some of your staff, and I'd be happy to work with the planning department, engineering department. Can we come up with a plan that makes better sense for how you have a hotel there, a residential area and critical access? Because right now, it's not working, and we're happy to do that. I would just hope you would support that, and we'll work with staff, and we'll bring something back. We'll absolutely bring something back because right now, it's not working.
Tyler, is that a path that can lead us to some resolution here? And do you and staff have to work on this issue in this manner?
Absolutely, and we've spoken with both Mr. Surratt and the operator of the W Hotel, and happy to participate in that process.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, John.
And thank you, Jim, for all your years of service. You kicked my butt a couple times, but that's all right. It was deserved. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Sir, you're going to have to take up further comments.
Sure. Thank you.
With our, and you can start with our staff as they try to engage in that. Yeah, absolutely. Other members of the public?
Thank you, Jim, for many, many years of opportunities and challenges you've met. My name is Rachel Richards. I live at 816 Vine Street, and I've been Aspenite since late 1978. I do have answers to a couple of the questions that were asked, particularly C-Dot cannot do anything it wants. The ballot initiative 147 specifically outlines it has to be within an improved environmental impact statement according to National Environmental Policy Law. So I'll leave it at that. The initiative process is a fundamental right Colorado citizens. You've received a memo and a brief by one attorney to challenge putting Resolution 147 signed by over 480 registered voters in the city of Aspen, seeking to exercise that fundamental right. With less than 48 hours, 24 hours to review the claim asserted by Mr. Gerskin, I would, however, assert that our petition is legal under Colorado law and the city of Aspen Home Road Charter. Our petition is definitely different than the Wagner case cited by Mr. Gerskin. And sadly, I believe it is an effort to stop vote from going forward because Mr. Segal and Three-Lane Bridge proponents fear that, given the chance, Aspen voters will choose to move forward. To end cut-through traffic in the West End that occurs nightly, to create a second emergency wildfire evacuation, to support recruiting workforce in the mass transit system that allows mobility without charge for every trip, the raft of service and bus type transit that the whole valley, except for parts of Garfield, pays both property and sales taxes to support. Our petition does not put us in the position that the Wagner case did of telling C.DOT and FTA how to engineer a totally current entrance to Aspen than is approved in 1998 preferred alternative record decision. Clearly, if Mr. Segal and others continue to pursue stopping the vote and seek to enjoin that question after it is asked, that would be something for the courts to decide. But council should not put itself in the shoes of the court and impair or impede the voters from having their say. Our committee and the 480 centers of our petition are invoking the legislative process. This council should not hold up one ballot initiative while allowing another to proceed, one that is intended to manipulate future voting processing, creating a super minority of 40% plus one, who can control our future actions the community can take to address the clearly failed and dysfunctional Highway 82 access across Castle Creek Gorge. Until the initiative is placed on the ballot, the questions raised by Mr. Gerson are not in ripe for court to decide. Thank you very much for your time. I think the people I've talked to are very tired of the idea of two more years of study, $2 million of a new EIS, and with the outcome of a super minority potentially moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rachel. You have just comments for you, Rachel. As you went through the list of benefits to a new roadway, I think that there are other alternatives that can return those benefits. And so again, we're involved in a public process trying to get community input, and then we started an EIS process, which was also at your encouragement for quite some time. And so, you know, we're trying to move forward as best we can and bring the community with us and have that. So I appreciate your comments about the action items we'll be seeing later.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor? Frankly, you've had five and a half years to have proposed a unified split shot to this community, and an EIS process could have been begun in May of 2023 to vet all these ideas without any $1 million nearing of the Three-Lane Bridge idea. We could be much further along. Unfortunately, the Biden infrastructure money, which we were shooting for in 2022, has now been allocated across the state to other communities with shovel-ready products. Thank you for your time, and I would suggest that, I'm not sure everyone is unbiased in terms of what we want to add later on, when Mr. Guth has sent out a newsletter asking people not sign the petition.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other members of the public for comments this evening? Yes, sir. If you want to give us information, it should be tinged with a whole bunch of opinion or it probably won't resonate.
Okay, well, it's my opinion. My name's Ken Johnson. Everybody's in their mailbox. I have a patented biodegradable fire-resistant foam that is sprayed on homes or garages or decks or other combustibles in front of a wildfire. It helps protect them burning up. I didn't have any, so I didn't. But I was looking, just to talk to you and get your ideas or your opinions on things you could use it for. You know, if a fire started at the bottom of Red Mountain and burned all those $20 million homes up there, people would be sort of wondering. There's only one road up there, and with my spray, you could, well, you could protect those homes. You know, and it's not for the homeowners because homeowners won't go and spray their homes. You know, if they get told to evacuate their homes, they're not going to spend a few hours to spray their homes. And they'll get in the car with dogs and cats, all their important papers, and wife and kids, and get out of there. My phone would do is protect their homes or garages or whatever, and they wouldn't come back to, it's just burnt to, burnt to the ground. I think, I think it's a very good product, and I just wanted your opinions and your comments.
With the fire prevention team or the wildfire team at Aspen Fire?
I've talked to the fire chief and the assistant. They both had ideas, but nobody's gotten back to me. I don't know if I presented it right or if I, you know, what I should do differently or...
Let me connect you with the prevention team and the wildfire collaborative team. I have your email here. I think that'd be helpful because we do wildfire assessments at Aspen Fire, and these are the type of things that I'm sure people would be interested in as long as it was vetted and proven to be as good as you say it is.
Well, yeah, we've had small tests on it, and we've sprayed on plywood and cedar siding. And the only thing that happened is a little char on the outside, but nothing happens on the side where the spray was. So it's a really good product.
Not to be dumb about, but I see that you have a suite here in Aspen. Is this company and everything based in Aspen?
Yeah, I live at the Aspen Country Inn.
Okay.
And that's my office.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I'll send an email and connect you to them, so thank you.
Did anybody get one of these?
It's in our mailbox downstairs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public, public comment this evening? I think we have one online. Have a... You have to wait. I have one online. I have a Martha Tierney. Martha, are you there? Martha Tierney, you're online. You are not coming through. Can you hear us? Is that somebody in the room or on the speakers?
I just said, how, did you tell her how to unmute?
She just asked over her microphone how to unmute her microphone?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Gotcha. Yes, go right ahead. Yes, yes, go right ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay. Martha, you might be on a highly delayed line, and my suggestion is for you to disconnect, reconnect. We will take another comment, and we will try you again.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Sorry for the technical problems. My name is Martha Tierney, and I'm an intern. Yes. Yes, go right ahead. There is a long delay.
Martha, I'm going to ask you to disconnect and reconnect for a better connection. Thank you. Francis.
You have entered the twilight zone. Okay. Francis Dawkins, I've been here 38 years. I'm a volunteer DJ, K-N-K. I'm a writer, Aspen words, stuff like that. And I'm really, I really like being a citizen of Aspen. It's Klaus Overmeyer's birthday. He's either 105 or 107, something crazy like that. I just heard it on the radio coming over. You know, and one of the things he said was, let's resolve our differences, you know, and learn to get along in the whole world because we're all kind of freaks and all a little different, or at least. And it's holiday coming up, holidays here, end of the year, new year. All that's like what I heard about this being a democracy and that we have an electorate that needs more information. Entrance to Aspen, you know, bridge, train, a monorail, I don't know, auto-free town, whatever. And I like, I like being able to express those ideas. So, you know, I got some information here about the cannabis revolution. And I still am basing the idea, and I think I'm catching up with it, an adult cannabis consumption lounge, Aspen Tea Pad. And it'd be gathering place for, you know, community events, good tax revenue. We would have music, local talent, place for discussion, library. I don't know where it would be, where it could land, but this could happen in the space of maybe next year. A lot has changed. No, 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 no. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties everywhere. Hope we hook up there. Just renewed my call on all advocacy membership, and I will continue to work on it. I don't know that this could have an impact as far as, you know, the old gonzo stuff and what we have going on as far as, you know, being a forward-thinking community with maybe a little weirdness. But that's really all I have to say. I can feel my face turning red. And just to have a community like this and a place for open discussion and, you know, happy, happy, happy.
Francis, could you get Snoop D O double G to come and promote your ideas?
I'm sorry?
Could you get Snoop D O double G to come promote your ideas at the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
These are the weeds days, they were.
Oh, do you believe him?
As you just said, Snoop D O double G, yeah, I believe him. Thank you so much, Francis. Make Aspen gonzo again.
Thanks, I like that. Nice hat, bro.
Thanks, Francis.
Stuff like, it's, it's an important concern. I like what Peter's getting of these voluntary community, you know, Office of Resource Sufficiency, together with, you know, a place to talk about these things. And again, it would bring, it would be like a membership club for people to be able to express ideas.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, back for online or on phone or on Zoom, is Martha back on?
You have a nice heart.
Martha, if you can hear me and you want to try comments at this time? You are muted currently. Five more seconds, Martha, if that's your real name. You are muted currently.
Hi, this is Martha Tierney. Can you hear me?
Oh, no. Yes.
Yes, we think.
Can you hear me?
Oh, God.
Nope, does not seem to work.
Yes.
I am not muted, though.
Martha, go ahead and speak. We hear you.
Second, Martha, is that the real name?
Says that I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
You are muted currently.
He's in like a universe.
I am not. I am not muted.
Okay, Martha, real quickly, there, there is a delay between us, so you are hearing things I'm saying 20 seconds ago. After you hear me say this, please just make your comments.
Nope, does not seem to work.
Yes.
Martha, go ahead and speak. We hear you.
Okay, there's about a 10 second or more delay, so I'm going to speak and it's going to be very awkward.
It already is.
Okay, real quickly, there is a delay between us. You are hearing things I'm saying 20 seconds ago.
Let her go.
Please just make your comments.
Okay, my name is Martha Tierney and I'm an attorney with Tierney Lawrence Styles in Denver. My practice.
I'm on a delayed one. I'm going to speak and it's going to be very awkward.
My practice is election law and ballot initiatives and charter amendments and I wanted to speak about proposed Resolution 147. I am providing counsel to the proponents of that resolution and hopefully if the measure goes forward, we will be working to pass it. I did want to reference that the, the Constitution addresses charter amendments in Article 20, Section 6, and in that section, it says that home rule cities shall have the power to make amend, add, or replace the charter of their city or town, which will extend to all local and municipal matters. This is different from Article 5 that deals with initiatives and referenda. So this matter is properly before you. They have gathered their signatures under Section 31, 2, 210, and this matter should be placed on the ballot. The Home Rule City exercises exclusive jurisdiction over matters within the local city or town and this charter amendment should be placed on the ballot. I also just wanted to reference the Wagner case, which is very distinguishable from this situation. In that case, the proposed initiative, not a charter amendment, was to change all of the design and the engineering of the project. This situation under proposed the Resolution 147 is more akin to a zoning decision, which is absolutely under the purview of the municipality and the legislative process. So first charter amendment, not subject to the Wagner case and its measure should go on the ballot.
Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Good time you hear this.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Okay, is there any other public comment this evening?
Yes, there is.
Was, was that, was that person on the phone, was that your representation? She's working with you? Okay, thank you.
Shall we get a ballot measure? We don't really have a ballot measure until you vote.
Thank you.
I catch my breath. I'm running over here. Hey, as you guys start.
Good job.
You're long. Kelly McNicholas Curry, resident of Aspen. Thank you all. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Congratulations, Jim Tru, on your pending well deserved retirement. I'm here to talk about the task rate bridge petitions. I think what you have in the agenda is perfunctory to bring it to the ballot, given that both questions pass the hurdles for a sufficient number of signatures. And I, you know, have been on the committee for the giving C dot permissions to expand the uses for the record of decision over mult and allow for use of that open space for new bridge and bus lanes, traffic congestion, and especially wildfire evacuation. I think that any solution that doesn't result in a second bridge for wildfire evacuation is just irresponsible in this day and age and I think we have to get to the plan that says do that. I would, my preference would be if the council would revisit your decision about referring your own question to the ballot on that. I think that the citizens of Aspen deserve to vote on it, you know, airport entrance Aspen interchangeable issues in many ways. And I think that it would be great if this board, you know, went to the voters to ask it explicitly because it's time. I don't think we have any time to waste. We've seen similar mountain communities go up in flames and people die and have loss of life and property and we should take all measures to be better prepared in the event that might happen. You know, we, I live on the other side of the roundabout. I only come into town now a few days a week probably, but me, along with the 100,000 other people that live in our region, have people that we love deeply and care about that cross the bridge every day to come to work. And I think it's time for us to move into the reality that we have now for better solutions that a bridge will provide. So keep for consideration on that. And I will also say that I, you know, I love the Monroe Space. I take my dog there frequently. I ski there frequently. It's such a lovely, it's such a lovely path to walk on with my two kids and get them to learn how to cross country ski. But in all my walks around the community and engagement with people, you know, the open spaces, the lack of open space or adequate open space is not the problems that we are solving right now. We've needed for it. I think that allowing a minority to decide how, how that use should be for the future would disenfranchise other voters in this community and I hope to not move forward at the ballot. So thank you for your time. Nice to see you all and have a good holidays.
Thanks, Kelly. Last call, public comment this evening. Can somebody look out the doors and see if there's anybody else that might be wanting to come in or? All right, I don't see any other comments, so you guys have a good night. Let's bring it back to council table and this is an opportunity for council members' comments this evening. Sam has a hand up. Go for it, Sam.
Wonderful, thank you. I got two things tonight. First of all, third thing, Ken, I emailed them for you. Check your email, you should be in it, so now you can respond about your thing. First real thing is I want to offer my condolences to family of Lisa Sabata, a community member who passed away over the weekend, struck by a car, 23 years old, and it's unfortunate that, I'm sad to bring this up as something that might have been a preventable situation, but even so, I don't know the history of this area as well as I wish I did. I'm sure it's been talked about many times. I've driven by the area in the last couple of days and look at it on Google Maps Street View and I was wondering at least from this council if we can get more information about pedestrian safety crossing there. I don't know what that means, whether it be flashers or more lights. I don't want to jump to conclusions. I heard Lisa was dressed in all black and that's no use, but if there needs to be more lighting in an area for people to cross a highway at night, I think, I'm hopeful that there are simple safety measures that we can put in to prevent a tragedy like this from happening in the future. So I don't know if I need to make a formal request or ask Tyler if you can send us information on how to, on the history of the area and things that we could potentially do as a city, especially as facts come out to understand how it's preventable in the future.
Sure, just looking for, council, not, just also advising the state highway, so our interventions there are going to need to approve by that entity as well if we were to move in that direction.
Understood, so this time I would just more ask for if there is like information packets on context that I'm missing and also I'm going to ask for council support on this, but like what options we might have to go to the state with to say, we want flashers, we want more lights, where it may be to prevent a situation like this happening in the future.
Supportive. Thanks, Sam.
I think that conversation needs to start as well with residents that are out there because we're talking about a very limited access point for, for a few folks, so I would definitely start conversations with them as well.
Thank you all for that. And the other thing I have, not sure, we can maybe probably wait to discuss it until after everyone's comment, but we got an email from Lift Up about their request to put an option on the food tax refund for a donation. Lift Up, and the comment I had on that right now and like looking for council discussion on it is that if we do it for them, which I'm very open to, I think we need to allow other nonprofits to be an option for that as well.
And we're actually going to be talking about that in a few minutes.
Sam, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Bill, did you care to?
Well, we're going to offer a comment on that, but if you have.
It's going to, we're going to, we need it, yes.
Yeah, that was really my only council comment. I was going to bring that up too, so thank you.
Okay. John?
Yeah, as we start our winter ski season, just wanted to say, again, the main reason I'm working for the city as an elected is because of my concern for the environment. Since I live in town, I've, I have heard that we have lost a minimum of 30 days of frost free, of nights when we get frost, when the temperature drops to 32 degrees. That's, that's a figure that's been around for like 10 years now, so I think we're actually well over 30 is that we've lost here since I've been here. I'm going to share a story from the Toronto Star that came out today that says in the report, says Toronto's gained average of 13 days above freezing annually over the last decade. Almost two weeks worth of winter days in loss because of climate change according to news day to Monday. It's from Climate Central, a Canadian group. The reality is, here's a quote, "The reality is that winters across the globe are warming faster than summers and having cold enough winters is critical for so many aspects of our society, from how we play to our economies to our ecosystems," said Christina Dahl, Climate Central's vice president for science. "Toronto gained an average of 13 days of above freezing annually over the last decade because of fossil fuel driven warming," the analysis found, "the second most of any major Canadian city after Vancouver. Montreal lost six while Ottawa lost four." I think that should be concerning to anybody in this room because Aspen is a tourist driven economy that's dependent upon our environment, dependent upon snow. This place started as a ski resort and currently we're in the middle of our season, so I'm pleased to be part of a city government that takes this threat very seriously and I hope everybody in this room will also take this threat seriously. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ward comments this evening?
Yeah, thank you. I'm on holiday season. December 25th is the end of the Christmas season and start of Hanukkah. I wish everybody in our community, I think, as Paulson's book points out, is not just Aspen and it's not just the Ever Valley, it's the whole, the whole I-70 Colorado River Valley and Royford. And as we enter some contentious issues on entrance to Aspen, that those issues affect our whole community, not limited just to Aspen, and that I trust that the voters will decide and we will, we will abide by our decision, but when it's all over, I hope that we can all still tolerate or embrace each other and regardless of what you feel, somebody else's feelings are just as valid as your own. So to, to promote the feeling of community and brotherhood among men during this season where we should be embracing each other, I just want to extend to our entire community here and up and down the valley, good wishes and holiday cheer. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. I have a few comments. I'm going to start with addressing these ballot question items a little bit deeper. There's this talk about the citizens deciding, but the question that is in front of the voters or that is potentially going to be in front of the voters is unclear. This to me is akin to the lift one A voting on. Like, we shouldn't be putting these kind of questions in front of the electorate because they are unclear. We are in the middle of a public process that started years ago with some of the council members that are up here and now we have citizens who are usurping that and driving for their own ambitions and I just, it's a shame to me. We were, we started this process for community involvement and the question that is potentially going on the ballot is not clear what the voters are going to be getting or voting for. For somebody who spoke earlier that said that he didn't care what solution it was, just wanted anything, I'm sorry, that's not the approach I take. I want the best solution for this community. Anyway, talk more about it later, but this has gone off the rails. I'm getting to a point of disappointed in, in how this community dialogue is going around. It's just, it's too bad. Anyway, I will now say to my city staff members, happy holidays and happy end of the year. I want you all to know how much I appreciate working with you. So I hope that you have a wonderful holiday break and I hope you take a decent break, please. To my council members, happy holidays, I wish nothing but the best for each of us and I look forward to us working together in the future for years to come, whether we're on the same council or not. So to each of you, I wish you a happy holiday. To the citizens of Aspen, this is my last Christmas break, sitting in the mayor's seat. It has been nothing but an honor and a privilege to serve here and to each one of you, whether we're on the same side of issues or different side of issues, I wish you the best in the new year and a happy holiday to all of you. Thank you. I want to join in Sam's sentiments to the family and friends of Lisa, a true tragedy on our highway, something that hopefully we will learn from. This gentleman, I think, lives out in the area there, so you know this area firsthand. To her friends and family, she will be missed, a lovely person. I want to say congratulations to Accra and the community for an amazing winter school celebration that just happened. For those of you that missed it, don't miss it again. It was in full effect, thousands of people in Wagner Park, music, soup school going on. It was just a wonderful gathering and a great opportunity for community to get together. I want to say thank you to Accra who made it, made it all happen and thank you to those participants in the school for showing up this year. Last year, I think we had five participants because of timing, very difficult for restaurant employees to get out there and support. This year, I think there were 13, so plenty of soup for everyone. I do want to get to the, actually, I'll save that for last. I've got a couple of communications department notices, snow removal and community responsibility. This is just a notice to everybody. For those of you that are new to the community, may not be aware of this and those of you that have been here for a long time certainly are, but the city is urging all residents and property owners to comply with two rules designed to ensure safety and accessibility throughout the community. Proper snow removal and adherence to parking regulations are essential to help keep the city functioning smoothly during winter weather. Sidewalk safety is a community responsibility. Property owners or tenants must ensure that sidewalks, driveways, and mailboxes are accessible, that you as a tenant or a property owner are responsible for that. The city does not provide snow removal services in these areas. Please shove all snow within three hours of snow falls end or after daybreak. Please snow, place snow on property or in designated snow storage areas within five feet of the asphalt edge or urban gutter, then it can be removed by the city. Keep fire hydrants and transformers clear of snow to ensure emergency and utility access. Do not push snow onto sidewalks, roadways, fire hydrants, or other public transit loading zones. Failure to comply with snow removal rules may result in fines or penalties. Once again, the way that we handle this in Aspen is that your frontage, your sidewalk frontage is your responsibility and we look for your help in this. I want to make another announcement about Coco with Cops. We always getting our AP together with our community members. Next Monday is another opportunity, December 23rd from 1:00 to 3:00. Come enjoy some hot chocolate with our community response and police officers. This is going to be at the corner of Galena and Cooper, right across from Paradise Bakery, who will be, well, so hot chocolate and snacks. This is Monday, 1:00 to 3:00, not just about meeting up with the APD's finest, but also a community get together as well. We had the Lift Up request come up, so for members of the public, we received, council members received an email that was asking, a request by Lift Up to make the food tax refund available to be chosen to donate a part or all of your food tax refund to Lift Up. They provide pantry service for our entire valley. So when I received that email, I sent it over to finance, legal, and others to find out, hey, what are the parameters around this? At tonight's table, all we need from council members is a request for more information. When I sent the email, basically their response back to me was like, yes, things are possible, but give us some time to figure out how this can and could perhaps work. Um, Sam, I think in your comments, you're talking about the potential for not just Lift Up, but maybe it's an assignable, uh, charitable donation at the time of application for your food tax refund. At this time, what I need from council members is, are you interested in getting more information about the potential of including either Lift Up or and or others in the food tax refund process? Is that something that you want to hear more information about?
Yes.
Yes, can I make a couple additional comments?
Yeah, let me just get the vote, the votes. Are you interested in, well, if we do it for Lift Up, we should do it for everybody as an option.
O- okay. That is what we need staff time and energy spent on. The truth is, is that right now, you can take your food tax refund and you can donate it to whoever you want. There's no prohibition against that. What we would be looking at is, do we want to include that on the application? I can tell you right now that if we were going to have a box to check and then a blank line that said, please donate this amount to the charity of my choice, that will be extremely cumbersome for dispensing of those funds. So we probably aren't looking at that kind of system, but I'm hearing that you, you are interested in something along those lines. Bill first and then Sam.
Um, thank you, Tori. Firstly, I just want to demonstrate my appreciation, express my appreciation to Lift Up. You know, it's the, it's the preeminent, if not the only, food pantry providing, um, food support services to those in need in our community through whole valley and beyond. And, uh, I'm deeply appreciative of the work that they do, and I support them through one of my businesses extensively, and I'm proud to do so. Uh, I, I, I thank you and agree with you on your point about being very comfortable in my conversations with the Lift Up, um, board members and, and the executive team. And, and after all, I thought I actually suggested that it be exclusive to Lift Up, and, and I think that's because there's a very natural and symbiotic relationship between the nature of this refund and the nature of this tax and the service that they provide. So in my opinion, I, I do understand the interest in providing the opportunity for nonprofits to participate, given the nature of what this nonprofit does and that symbiotic relationship to the tax and, and the refund, um, I do think it's appropriate to limit it to one. I, I don't want to overburden staff and, and, uh, have this end up costing more money to administer than the benefit creates. I'd like to make this as simple as possible, and I do think that there's a full symbiotic relationship that people will appreciate and understand that it's limited only to one. So, uh, I ask you all to consider that. I'm certainly supportive of this, of this effort, um, of staff presenting us with more information and urge everyone to support the work Lift Up does.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, but, um, kind of cumbersome nature of doing multiple ones. Um, my suggestion would be a hyperlink to a list of nonprofits, nonprofits that want to be on that, um, list, local, um, that could be easily clicked upon, upon, uh, signing up for your food tax refund to then donate it afterwards, but it's their prerogative to take money and then donate it. But we'll make it easy for them by giving a hyperlink on the food tax refund signup form to do so. Um, to me, that's more fair. That's, that's why.
Um, so I hear support for this. Coming back to us in a work session, maybe information first, whatever it is, there is support for, uh, looking at avenues to channel food tax refunds or part or whole to some nonprofit. We don't need to have that whole conversation now. Staff needs some type of presentation. Um, uh, I thank you. I appreciate both ends of the spectrum for, for, uh, discussion, and so they have a little bit of background about what the spectrum of possibilities are. I will add the old ground there. Um, there are other organizations, for example, Food Bank of the Rockies that does a lot of local work, um, that is also has a Kleenex when it comes to food and, and food, uh, security. So, Pete, you do not need to come up.
I could.
Well, yes.
You know, I have to say congratulations, Jim Truitt. That's what you're supposed to do when you're here. The only thing I would like to add is obviously you want to have a follow-up conversation. You have to hold releasing the application, um, until a decision's made, so we don't put a document, or already filling out, and don't have that opportunity to check a box, not check a box, whatever the case may be. Uh, so that is a bit of an issue because it typically isn't be released come early January.
Okay, so if we get this discussion in January, then I don't think this council would have a real problem with releasing the applications until February one through fifteen probably. So maybe we can handle it in January?
I'd counter and say this, when, given the holidays coming up, we need to give staff time to think this through, um, and come back to us, and, and we should put this in effect for the following year and have the conversation, make sure there's time to do that. Uh, uh, I, again, I, I think just us having this conversation makes people aware of their opportunity to donate their funds on their own prerogative. I'm super supportive of this. I just don't know that we need to delay the application and the refunds because we have an interest in having this conversation.
The applications are open from January until April eighth?
They are open. Uh, I do agree with, uh, Councilman Regus that there will be a lot of potential questions if people don't see the application open, if some of those are used to filing early. Um, it doesn't mean that they won't be able to file, but it's just a bit more of a communication issue. I mean, we can try to handle those types of things. So it is truly such a table. I, I don't disagree that giving it a little more time might not, might not be more beneficial for, uh, the decision-making process.
Counsel, okay, hold off till twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, on the application, you could just put a, please consider donating, uh, to a charitable cause of your choice.
We can put that on the website.
Do council members want that?
Yeah, that's good enough for me for now.
That works for me.
Okay, we do not need a work session in January. We'll take it back up next year.
And Mr. Mayor, just to recap, um, we're gonna have a link on the website that expresses, uh, potential to donate to charities, uh, and link.
Just a statement.
Just a state, I apologize, just a statement, and then the rest will continue this discussion of food tax refunds.
I guess that's what we're hearing.
Tori, there's some competition for your sweater.
Yeah, it's Charlie Tarver. I mean, come on.
I came just to say Merry Christmas.
Yay! Thanks, Charlie. All right, thank you guys for that consideration. Uh, and then I'll just close my minutes with the same. Happy holidays to you, Charlie. Agenda amendments this evening. I don't see any managers' comments. Tyler?
None for me.
Board reports this evening. John?
Yeah, Ward, do you want to do app show?
Yeah, the biggest thing that, um, I think that transparent in the app meeting was interviews with officers, um, a decision that we made, um, at our next meeting, I think, but we heard, um, from, uh, the current hearing officer. Hearing officer that, uh, has, has been on deck, hasn't had to deal with any of the hearings yet, and then a third that has not done any, um, has had no engagement. All three of them are within twenty-five dollars an hour for, um, for their charges, so that, that shouldn't be an issue. One of them has just recently moved to Basalt and would be available for in-person meetings. Um, and, um, that was really the, um, the proxy of that meeting, I believe.
Uh, I would just add a couple of details. We did, we did nominate and vote on new officers. So our new chair is, is John Ward, and our new vice chair is Carson. She essentially changed positions. We also should see the capital reserve study soon, which I'm really looking forward to. Um, other than that, uh, Core, we had our event last Wednesday at Hooch with funding Randy Udale and Gistering, and, um, it was very well attended and I think a huge success. Uh, I also had a core Zoom meeting last Friday with Deborah on from Accra, wondering, we got together to, um, determine how we can work together, Core and Accra. And, uh, I was really, really impressed with Deborah's, um, willingness to, uh, how engaged she was on green initiatives and working together with Core to, um, get our projects done. Uh, let's see, I'd also like to point out that our own Tessa Shrinor is now board chair of Core, she's running Carbon Dale as a private citizen. Thank you, Tessa. And we will be working with Accra, a Keystone project, um, between Core and Accra. And I also like to say there was a huge turnout for the Nordic event on December eighth out at the golf course. I'm also very well attended. So I want to thank staff for all the effort put into that, as well as the, uh, winter school celebration, which I would agree was really well done, uh, and very well attended. Happy New Year to city staff and, um, really proud to be part of the organization. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Uh, board report, RFTA was last Thursday. Uh, the bulk of the meeting was budget live. Um, but the good news that was coming out of RFTA is that the strike, uh, by the drivers' union has been averted. Um, I was really happy to hear that, um, we were able to work on terms with them and come to an agreement. Um, so, uh, RFTA will not convene again until, uh, January. Um, you know, just a, a couple of asides, not really board reports. As I was saying last week, I believe, um, you know, I am attending, um, a subcommittee of RFTA, which is about first and last mile mobility. Um, and then, uh, this morning, I, uh, spent a little bit of time over at the Dunaway Room at the library where there is a convening of, uh, Picken County and stakeholders. I think ninety people were invited, um, uh, regarding, um, mental health services in our valley. And, um, looking for, uh, continuity and collaboration and, uh, more than anything, uh, end user experience satisfaction. So, um, you know, this just gives me an opportunity to remind people, you know, the holidays are not always the happiest time for everybody. And so please be aware of yourself, be aware of friends and your family that are around you. Um, you know, there are so many resources out there, both locally, statewide, and nationally. Please, if you need somebody to talk to, or if you need any help, or if you need somebody that might reach out for that help, there are so many resources that are available for you. That'll bring us down to our consent calendar this evening. The consent calendar consists of resolution number ninety-eight, municipal facilities decarbonization roadmap, resolution one forty-one, accepting a local planning capacity grant award. Resolution one forty-four and one forty-five, these are, uh, with the twenty twenty-five asphalt resurfacing project contract. Uh, if you remember, that is a, um, uh, collection of various paving projects, uh, all together into one contract and one, or two contracts and, and one project. We also have the draft minutes of November nineteenth. Are there any items that council members wish to pull for more discussion? Bill?
One forty-five, please.
One forty-four and one forty-five. Got it. Any others? Sounds good. Let's start with discussion on one four four and one four five if we can, the asphalt paving.
Yeah, no, no specific questions on this, and I'm not suggesting specific action on this, but I am noticing a trend of, um, only yielding one bidder on large meaningful contracts. Uh, concerned about that, and, and I'd like to, I'd like to get support to ask city staff to study this and figure out what we can do. Um, I, I don't think that the competitive environment is quite the same as it once was during sort of peak COVID frenzy. Um, but I'm not seeing the results change in our bidding process. And this, amongst some other projects that we've done recently, seem to be something to me that should attract more than bidder. And I'm concerned about it. So wa- wanted to look to the rest of you and, and ask, can we ask staff to, um, look into this, figure out what we can do to, um, enhance the attractiveness of our projects to potential bidders, yield more results? I- is it, is it the explicit nature of working with the city that's turning people off from bidding? Is it, um, larger macro trend? You know, what, what is it when we do about it?
I'll allow you any comments if you like, but really probably turn this direction and say, um, you hear the conserv, we've had a couple of projects over the last while that face the same kind of dilemma. Um, I don't think it's unique to city. I think, um, it, it could be a greater problem, but are you guys having internal debate around this? And what could you share or, or what could you say? We'll, we'll be prepared to share back some information for you on this.
Sure. So this is a, a issue that's top of mind for city staff. Um, actually, coincidentally, this project was built, bid out in twenty twenty-four for twenty-five, concerned to make it more attractive to potential bidders. Um, there are any number of issues when we only get one bidder, uh, back. I think in this, uh, particular instance, and I'll let Trish and Jack speak to it, um, I think it was, uh, scope work, other projects in the region that were going on. Um, and the fact that topographically we're at one end of the valley and it makes for a less efficient, uh, project from, um, asphalt patching to lay down. Um, but, uh, this is something that we explore with our bidders, um, prior to bidding and after bidding the autopsy, uh, to ask folks what was attractive to this particular project, what was not attractive. Um, and, and Jack and Tricia, I'd ask you to maybe talk a little bit about, uh, the other bidders that came to pre-con and maybe why they didn't ultimately bid the project.
Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, so this is an issue that has been top of mind. We have made changes to how we bid these projects by combining it into a larger scope, making sure that it's bid earlier. I'm going to contractor meetings on the Western Slope to try to get interest from other contractors. In past years, twenty twenty-two, we have not received any bids. So I, I think that we have seen increase in interest of, from making these changes. Um, but yes, as Tyler alluded to, being at the top of the valley and having a small project that is scattered around our community with, uh, other challenges such as traffic and, um, traffic control, pedestrian control, we don't necessarily attract the same amount of bidders as a highway project would.
I, I do want to mention that we're very pleased with Frontier and their past performance. They're, um, a high-notch company and their product is, um, bar none. So we are thrilled that Frontier did bid on this project.
Yeah, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you did anything wrong on this one, or that we should do anything different on this particular project, but I am noticing a concerning trend, and I'll do something about it. And, you know, I think we need to look inward and reflect. Is it, is it the very nature of our projects? Is it our geographical location, or do we just make it difficult for, for people to work with us? I don't know the answer to that. Um, but I think we should ask ourselves that question honestly, and, and is that why people are turned off from, from working with us? I, I don't, I really don't know, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything. I'm just asking the question. So, I, I do think it, it, it warrants study. I think that we owe it to the community to make sure that we can attract as many bidders as possible to deliver the best return on investment. So.
Yeah, but I, you know, set on this call, um, no bidders, and, um, when we had one bidder and we had to accept that bidder or lose state money for a bus stop on, uh, Garmish and Aspen Street and, uh, um, EOTC didn't get any bidders. And I don't think the blame, uh, I don't think it's a blame issue. I don't think people aren't bidding because it's with the city of Aspen. I think that, um, that you, the bids are open to all, all, um, people want to, and they're, they prequalify, and they decide to, to bid on it. Um, I don't think that should be interpreted as, uh, it's a blame city of Aspen that people don't want to, to, um, take on this project. I think they've tried. Jack, I think is indicating he's making efforts to increase the, the response to these, um, to these requests. Are these going on bid net? You know, it's open to all. Um, you know, appreciate your, your sentiment, and I'd like to see more bidders as well, but, uh, there are only certain number of things that we have control over, and we can't, we can't demand people to bid on a project if they don't want to.
Yeah, that's my whole point is why don't they want to?
So, um, Tyler, is this a conversation that you and Bill can have? Is there information that you've done from some of your post-chem and can you start that conversation, Bill?
Absolutely.
I, I don't think we have enough to, to do a work session or that thing, but it's definitely information that I think we'd all be interested in. I don't know if you have answers, but you definitely have some data.
Yeah, happy to have the conversation, and, and again, this, obviously, we want to be operating in an competitive environment because we think that's the best for the community. So, we'll continue that. I'd also like to point out that, uh, while this project received one bid, uh, many of our other projects that have been out to bid on bid net lately have gotten more bidders, five or more. Uh, and so we've been seeing some great response lately. Uh, sometimes with specialized contractors or civil work, um, there's just, uh, physically less vendors in, in our lower region that are available to even respond. So sometimes we end up with one, but generally, we've been having good luck in the, in the recent past.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve consent. You ready?
Yeah, I think we can. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Uh, we have a motion and I can for the consent calendar. Um, any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Counselor Goose.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein. Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Tori.
Yes. Thank you for that. That brings us on our agenda to notice of call up. Only this is an opportunity for me to thank you to all the staff that are about to leave the room right after the consent calendar, but wow, riveted, riveted. All right. Except for Jack.
Yep, boring.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gillian White, Aspen's Historic Preservation Officer. Um, this evening, I am to notify you of the HPC Resolution Number Eleven, a series twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the Aspen Historic Preservation Commission granting conceptual major development, relocation, and setback patients for individually designated historic property located at three twenty-five West Hopkins Avenue. Staff recommends that Aspen City Council uphold HPC Resolution Number Eleven, Series Twenty Twenty-four, which requires no action on your art. However, if council feels uneasy, uh, staff has prepared a presentation with digital tells. I'm also happy to answer any questions that may, um, inform you to make this decision.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody that immediately is looking for call up? Do you have any questions at this time?
I had one question in the basement. Is this just under the, the building itself?
Under the building itself?
Uh, not beyond the building. I have some of the.
Does the footprint of the basement expand beyond the footprint of the at-grade building?
No.
Um, my, my questions around this were, um, it appears from the maps that we have that some of the historic buildings were in the property, the easement, the, up to the property line. But we, uh, in the setbacks, I should say, I'm sorry.
Correct.
And the request, the, 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 the new development request, I think, seeks a variance of being in those setbacks. Why, um, why would it be appropriate for new construction to be in the setbacks if that's the condition that I'm understanding from the?
So the variations are actually for the historic, uh, structure, so those are to return it to its original location.
So, so it's only historic that we go back into the?
Correct.
Setback. Thank you for that. Other questions here? And no motion either.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gillian.
Thank you. That brings us to first reading of ordinances this evening. Tonight is the first ordinance number twenty-one. It's an adoption of chapter twenty-nine, note two, construction and demolition debris diversion.
All right, ready?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Council. My name is Aine Bresnan Smith, and I'm the Waste Diversion Enabling Program Administrator for the Environmental Health and Sustainability Department. And tonight we are here for a first reading of our construction and demolition debris diversion ordinance. Accompanying me at the table, we have?
Uh, Penny Anderson, ComDev Director.
Tricia Aragon, City Engineer.
And before we get into the policy itself, I'm going to?
Also have Erin Reed, our Construction and mitigation officer. He's in the audience here.
And you have representatives from Picking County Solid Waste Center, um, Kathy Hall, the landfill manager, and Emma Garcia, the FTE for their C and D program. So before we get into the policy, I'm going to discuss a bit more about ground for here tonight. In twenty twenty-two, council adopted their carbon goal, committing the city of Aspen to emissions reductions of sixty-three percent by twenty thirty and a landfill reduction of seventy percent by twenty fifty. When we look at Aspen's annual greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we see that sixteen percent of our emissions are related to the landfilling of material. When we look at the majority of the materials landfilled at the Picking County Solid Waste Center, fifty-three percent of that is construction and demolition debris. On the right is a table of the materials disposed of on average that makes up the C and D debris. And over half of those materials are locally salvageable and recoverable. So over half of what's being thrown away as C and D debris today could have been salvaged and brought back into our local economy. Additionally, our Aspen Sustainability Action Plan adopted by council outlines construction and demolition debris diversion as a priority for the climate action team to uh, create regulations on to um, get in line with council's carbon goal. Um, in twenty twenty-one, Picking County adopted their construction and demolition debris ordinance, setting a thirty-five percent diversion standard for all of their permitted projects. They have seen a lot of success with their program since twenty twenty-one with an average of a sixty-six percent diversion from the permitted projects. On May thirteenth, we were here last for a work session where we presented this information uh, more in depth to council on the state of construction and demolition debris in the landfill and received direction to return for a first reading of a policy with specific criteria outlined um, that I'll get to along in this presentation. Over the summer, we did immense stakeholder engagement and feedback sessions with the construction and demolition uh, community to learn about the successes, barriers and challenges to diverting their construction and demolition debris. We specifically worked with the contractors that are familiar with the county's code right now to ask them questions that council had prompted us in May related to the space, time and costs associated with a policy of this sort. For time, uh, what we learned from these active participants with C and D is that if you um, if it is taking a week to demolish a structure, raise it to the ground, bulldoze it down and throw it all away in the landfill, a policy of this type would take around two to three times longer, so maybe two to three weeks. This is for the demolition phase alone and not the entirety of the building permit project. Because at the demolition phase, that is when materials are being removed from the structure and during the building phase, we're bringing materials in. So the two to three times longer um, time period is only during demo. For costs, uh, this can be broken into two different sectors and we are just focusing on the cost to the construction community tonight and not the community as a whole or the environmental costs. These are broken down into labor costs, which will increase due to the nature of um, deconstruction and separating materials out instead of demolishing everything at once. And because it is taking longer to deconstruct the structure, you will need additional workforce and labor, which is two to threefold. Uh, for operational costs and machinery that might be required to comply with this ordinance and make it easier for the workers to separate out those materials, we we are seeing those additional costs are actually negligible because of the tipping fees at the landfill. Currently, it is two hundred forty-five dollars per ton for the disposal of C and D debris that is all mixed together. Once you separate those materials out, it is anywhere between fifteen to forty-five dollars per ton for, say, metals or concrete. So there is cost savings there seen that we have heard from active contractors that uh, negate the additional costs for operations. For the space, what we approached council with in May was that there may be a need for additional dumpsters to separate those materials into and have them pulled from the site. We are learning that for active participants in demolition or in deconstruction practices now, they are separating separating can uh, materials onsite by type into piles. They are not requiring to use a container for each material and instead waiting for their pile to get large enough that a truck can then be filled up and brought to the diversion or disposal site of choice. This is also the most economic option for them as they don't want to be trucking away half-empty containers. We had a study done as well on the greenhouse gas impacts of additional trucking from a policy of this type that we saw there is um, about, there is like not a great environmental impact of this policy because they are filling up that container and waiting until it's full to bring it to the disposal site of choice. So same volume of material is moving from site to disposal location. I will note, since Picking County has had their C and D ordinance in place, I receive calls maybe on a weekly basis from contractors that are inquiring about the city of Aspen's C and D diversion regulations because they want to be in compliance with their code. At that time, I tell them we don't have one, but it's really encouraging to hear that they are actively aware of C and D practices as they have done so in the county. I'll now present a high-level overview of the ordinance and what it does. This is all um, built off of the feedback we've received from council back in May when we were here for a work session. The purpose of the C and D diversion ordinance is to prevent the permanent landfill disposal of recoverable building materials by requiring all locally salvageable materials be recycled, repurposed or rehomed, reducing emissions and conserving landfill operations. This ties back to council's carbon goal of reducing our total emissions and diverting landfill waste. The applicability of this policy will be for major projects with a greater than two thousand square feet of disturbance area. This would be determined at permit intake. Disturbance area is defined as the building's square foot area plus the soil disturbance area. These projects will be required to recycle a hundred percent of the recoverable materials. Um, and recoverable materials are defined as what Picking County Solid Waste Center can accept for recycling. Recoverable materials are what can be locally salvaged and recycled and repurposed within this valley and not just in general. This is a list of the different materials that will be applied to this code. We are not saying that projects are required to use the Picking County Solid Waste Center for their recycling or repurposing option of choice. They can bring their materials anywhere, but we wanted to set the expectation that these are the materials at minimum that should be diverted because we know the county can accept them for recycling. And finally, we have enforcement and penalties because we want to make sure this policy is successful. So we developed uh, um, some incentives and descentives for the permity. The first one is a deposit. This is what Picking County does as well. Our deposit would reflect, would reflect the environmental damages done if all of this material was thrown away in the landfill. It's calculated by the square foot of disturbance area multiplied by the social cost of carbon. The social cost of carbon is the environmental damage of throwing away those building materials. So the deposit would reflect that and and they will receive the deposit at the end of their project if they are in compliance with our code. We want to make sure that we are training and educating the labor and workforce that would be um, applied to this code because we want this to be successful and we want to make sure that we are keeping those materials out of the landfill. We will do pro- uh, progressive enforcement techniques such as warnings and educational touchpoints if we see projects are struggling to divert their materials. If projects are then still being non-compliant after those warnings and touchpoints, we will have built in unsorted load fees to this code that we can assign to projects. Um, once there is an accumulation of unsorted load fees, that's when we would move to a stop work order. We really don't want to be doing stop work orders because that means all of their materials are in the landfill at this point and it is negating the purpose of this um, ordinance. The stop work order would mean that the project cannot continue until they meet with us and discuss their waste diversion plan moving forward. But as I said, that's the last, um, that's not what we want to do. And um, we also want to make sure that projects are not paying their way out of compliance by just paying off fees. So we have included a stop work order for enforcement. I will now open this up for council discussion and questions and feedback you have for all of us leading into a second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. I remind council members that this is first reading, so this is an opportunity for questions. Um, we're not hearing this and we're not having a public hearing on this this evening. So we'll start with questions for more information for second reading, Bill.
Thanks, Tori. Thanks, Ainsley, and team. Um, first question is for the council table. Uh, at least one of the council members has a statement saying that if a program, they would agree to eliminate the um, demolition allotment program. So I would like to ask if you will commit right now that if this is approved, that you will eliminate the?
Um, I was one of the people that is looking for that angle, but no, I'm not going to commit to that tonight because I don't know how this is going to turn out. And I don't know how it relates and interfaces with the the demo permit program. Um, as I've said before, I think the demo permit program has served its need, but um, and it's it's done our community a a good service, but I think it needs amending. So I'll commit to um, supporting amendment of it, but I'm not going to commit to eliminating the program.
Okay, so I shouldn't take you at your word that you said at the table that a a program like this replace and should replace a demolition allotment?
You can take me at my word that it could, yes.
Well, I I believe you said.
And then, and it should, and when we get there, we can deal with that. Um, you know, that kind of, that kind of language, though, doesn't really put me in a good place, man. I don't, I don't threaten you. I don't talk to you like that, and I don't think you should talk to me either.
I didn't threaten you at all. I was asking you if your word is good.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's ridiculous. I answered your question. Thanks, Bill.
Um, thank you for that very straightforward answer. Appreciate it. Uh, Ainsley, could you, for second reading, please highlight all the differences from a program that you created versus the county program and explain why you have made the decision to make those differences?
Sure thing. I can include that in a memo packet.
Thank you. Secondly, could you please help us understand what what the disturbance area is that you're referencing, two thousand square foot?
Yes.
Large disturbance. I don't know if you want to do that now or a second reading, that's fine with me.
Let's take it as a reading. It gets a little bit into nuance of construction mission, um, program and calculations that are found elsewhere in codes.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, and lastly, um, Ainsley, you talked about about um, assessing fees for unsorted loads. I think that's the terminology used. Um, but then you also talked about how the the dump already assesses disproportionate rate per ton for unsorted loads. So is this not double penalization or double taxation in a way, um, to not unbend?
This would, so the county has a tipping fee. They do not assess an additional fee. What this policy would be doing is adding an additional fee on top of the tipping fee. So it is not, this is not paying the tipping fee money that's the penny, and the penalization would be in the city projects because they are out of compliance and bringing in assorted load.
Yeah, I understood it's from different authorities, but it's basically penalizing in two places for the same thing. Is that fair statement?
Talk about it second reading.
We can explore that second reading.
Um, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, like, I'm, I wonder what your overall feeling is on this, if from, this is your environment, your um, your business. And I'm curious how you feel, do you think this has a a place? Um, do you think that the greenhouse gas reductions and landfill? Um, and the penalties of uh, increasing the uh, the time that it takes to deconstruct, plus additional labor? I don't know. I I'd be really curious what the the delta is by the time, time saved and uh, what's the overall cost to the uh, project of this um, ordinance? And so I I was anxiously waiting your overall um, reaction to it, Bill.
Well, I I I'm open to it. I have several concerns. Number one is the civil liberties aspect of it. Um, you, if we require recycling of building materials, do we then require every single person to recycle their trash? Um, and penalize them to do that next? Um, they're they're very similar concepts. So is that something that you would be open to or not open to? I'm concerned with that. I I'm concerned with the precedent of this set. Again, I'm not opposed to the concept of it, and I think that there's good that can come from this if it is reasonably. Um, I'm not sure that I believe that there's a tangible or meaningful greenhouse gas reduction result of this effort. Um, I do think that this effort, if approved, should replace the demolition program as members of this council have alluded to. Um, I, I I do think if done reasonably, that this is something I could support. I want to understand um, how it might differ from the county's program, which I think is mostly reasonable. I do think that there's a significant cost, dollar cost impact to to doing decisions this way versus traditional demolitions. Um, especially we don't factor in in unsorted load fees, which are relatively new. I at least in terms of the magnitude of the delta between sorted loads and unsorted loads, I think is relatively new. Could be wrong, but I I I think that's where the magnitude of it always.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Bill.
I'm generally sort of obvious with how concerned.
I'm not trying to make the nexus on the civil, civil liberties uh, aspect of that, but I I think I understand where you're going with uh, if you mandate recycling here wasn't exactly, we already have um, composting in the city. But um, I'm I'm curious, that last element that built up is what, what is the overall cost to to the project for doing this? And obviously, the contractor or the developer is going, will escalate the cost of a um, of a redevelopment or a scape, scape replacement. Um, there was one, there was one, I think, project on the side of demo that did not do any diversion. Curious uh, if um, if the penalties are are not great enough to encourage it or um, the I I could probably find this in here, but I, in my, in my memory, there was one, that there were citations of how a lot of them um, passed a thirty-five percent diversion rate. And some of them came, uh, did a really good job, but I, but I recalled reading that one project didn't do any diversion. And so that raises my question of, is a thousand-dollar uh, deposit, i- is that enough to encourage people to do it? Um, I don't want to be too draconian about it, but if it's, if it's um, easier and a lot less expensive to not do it, accept the penalty, why are we doing this?
And what word is referencing, uh, there's data in the memo about Picking County's ordinance, and last year they had projects finalized and one didn't do any sort of diversion. Um, and you referenced the Picking County's a thousand dollars, but we had a study performed to um, account for the environmental cost of throwing away these building materials. And that is reflective of what our deposit and fees are off of, is that all of carbon?
Yeah, so I'd like to have some kind of a, an understanding of what the cost to to project and if this, if if somebody just totally ignores it.
But can I share one anecdote?
Yeah.
A personal experience, and I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know enough to know exactly what the formula is, but from personal experience, the deposit in Pick County right now can easily exceed seven hundred thousand dollars um, to comply with with Green Halo. Uh, and there's no interest being paid on that money or anything else. Uh, e- even though in theory you you get that money back if you comply, there's a significant cash outlay required to participate in this program. That doesn't, of course, have anything to do with the overall cost of compliance of of demolishing according to these standards, but just the the deposit outlay on cash is is significant.
Yeah, but those are, I want to have a full understanding of what those, those forces are.
Sam?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first and foremost, I do want to say, I do see this as a replaced demo allotment program. I think it's more targeted towards the goal and uh, not, it was not the only goal of that program, but one of the biggest goals that our landfill was filling up. And I know the life of that has been, since been expanded, but it's still good to do something like this to keep that life as long as possible. Uh, with that, the i- the questions that I have, um, I wanted to learn more about the place to sort debris. I saw it was in the packet, but I know there's some, a big difference between doing it downtown, doing it onsite, doing it offsite. And um, once again, when it comes to any sort of policy, there's nuance to it. Trying to do a demolition closer to the town core is not the same as in the West End as far as space goes, so um, I hope that like helps come up questions, or it's just how to deal with those differences and the difficulties that one homeowner might have demolishing their home versus another. Um, second to that, I was wondering if this program included not full demolitions, but the less than forty percent? Um, just because less than forty percent of a gigantic mansion uh, still might be worthwhile to recycle?
Yes.
Um, so I would hope there's maybe something built in.
Yeah, just very quickly, not to interrupt, but I I do think that that's, there's a, in this um, in this ordinance that is different from the demolition threshold, uh, that's a two thousand square feet of disturbance area. So in terms of permits that this is going to capture, um, it's going to be a significant number than those that are pushing up against that forty, forty percent. It'll be a, products that are smaller than that certainly.
Sorry, I understand you, you say it's, it's actually more two thousand square foot disturbance area, not a two thousand or greater sized home.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, at least the next one being, wondering if two thousand feet is small enough and whether it should drop significantly. I I really don't know the answer to that, but it's just, why, why not recycle a thousand square feet if you, if you can, sort of thing? This is, me, one of those things that if done correctly is for the greater good of everyone involved. Um, and same to Bill, I was wondering about how similar the ordinance is to Picking County and any issues you might have there between the city and county. Last one is something um, I was remembering from our previous conversation about this that Bill had brought up about um, the difficulty and nuance of recycling materials. When you, uh, I think one example, not to quote you wrong, was like, if you had like a mailbox in a concrete, um, i- it's like into concrete, like how much more difficult it might be to recycle something versus just getting rid of it and trying to have the code represent that so that you're not spending way too much effort on very little gain and seeing if the code can have that nuance. And because like, when we talked about before, I really appreciated the ambitious nature of it, and coming back, I'll be much more pragmatic about how this is rolled out. So, yeah, not every building is the same and some things, I I forget the phrase that was used, but recycling all the materials that you can recycle is good and all, but if you have recyclable materials, that's just going to be the biggest pain in the world to recycle. How can we work with a homeowner to be like, yeah, that's not worth it, um, to go through the mess to try to? the mess to try to get shipped off concrete from a mailbox to recycle it or something like that? So, thank you.
Definitely.
Thanks, Sam. Anything for me, John?
Just comment or two. First of all, I just want to say, the reason for the department program was not to keep recoverables out of the landfill. It was also to slow down the pace and scale of construction in every neighborhood of our city. That was really the driving force for me behind supporting the the program. I also support this very hardly. And I read this article in New York Magazine last week called Can Architects Build Rebuilding? Planning for the Future Means Thinking About a Structure's Long-Term Use Before It Goes Up. People are starting to design buildings realizing that at some point they're going to either be reused or deconstructed and recycled. And that, that's progress to me. So thanks for your hard workness.
Do you guys have any clarifying questions?
That was clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can take a motion to read.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 21, series of 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance number 21, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21, series of 2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending Title 29 of the Aspen Municipal Code to add a new chapter entitled Construction and Demolition Debris Diversion to include provisions restricting the disposal of recoverable construction and demolition debris as trash.
And if we approve.
21.
Or ordinance 21, series 2024, and first reading.
Motion and a second for ordinance number 21 on first reading. Is there any further discussion? I just wanted to say, I noticed Kathy's here, and I wanted to say thank you very much for being here. Thank you for the letter that you supplied to us as well. I've known Kathy for years, talked about waste diversion and and waste efforts. And so thank you. You do a great job out of the landfill, and we appreciate you a lot. Thanks for your for your work with our team as well in getting this together. Any other discussion? Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote then for ordinance number 21 on first reading?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in January.
Thanks.
That'll bring to our public hearings tonight. We have one, which is ordinance number 14. This is a response to Colorado House Bill 231255.
Can I switch? You can switch.
That's all right.
Thanks, team. Environmental team right there.
I was going to say, that's why none of them left after consent.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Torrey, Haley Hart, Long Island Mayor, Community Development, and Anderson, Community Development Director, here for second reading of ordinance 14, which is the response to Colorado House Bill 1255. I have a presentation I'd like to share. We're just going to go into a little bit more than first reading to sort of give the background, the history, the bill, and then sort of talk through the process for the red lines, but it shouldn't be too long. Presentation.
Famous last word.
Yeah.
It's like Jim Trujek's right there.
Oh, I forgot to say something about Jim.
Tonight's meeting should be short, Tori.
I think we need to add that into the sound. Jim Trujek's.
So again, just the agenda for second reading of ordinance 14. And before we sort of go into the history of GMQS, which Ben will present on, I just wanted to sort of hone in again on what this is. So Colorado House Bill, which was passed in the 2023 legislative session, number 1255. It is titled Regulating Local Housing Growth Restrictions. Again, the goal of this House Bill was to increase supply across all communities within the state of Colorado, but specifically within the Aspen context. It is invalidating our annual residential allotment system within GMQS. And before we sort of talk about the red lines, I wanted to just go through sort of the history of GMQS high level to just give context as to why we have these allotments and what the history is of that allotment program, as I don't know if everybody is sort of understanding of the the sort of contextual history of it. So we just kind of wanted to go through it at a high level.
Thank you again, Ben Anderson, Community Development Director, for the record. You know, I think while the current GMQS is a complicated chapter of the land use code, I think the the larger concept is is really an essential one to, I think, Aspen's sort of legacy in this field and in a large, to a large degree, kind of shaped what our current community looks like and feels like. Going back to the 60s and 70s, as the resort community was booming and and coming into its own, locals were talking considerably and lots of concern around increased traffic, number of new homes that were being built, number of businesses that were were being established, expansion sort of across the sort of kind of lodging base, skier visits, population, impacts on infrastructure, decreased housing, you know. We have a photo downstairs of a of a winter school parade from the 70s that is making jokes about affordable housing topics in the mid 70s. And then certainly the increased environmental impacts of of this translating into a really broad understanding of growth. There was a publication in 1977, which served as the basis for Picking County and Aspen's initial efforts towards growth management. There's a lot of data, a lot of numbers talking about growth in percentage-wise in terms of expansion of floor area and and different types of of development across town, certainly around population, et cetera. But it was, I guess the big topic is it was a very expansive understanding of of growth. It's this document right here. I forgot we had this slide. And, you know, the the important piece is that this this growth rate that came out of this, where the term quota came from, is that there was an intention, very clear intention, that on a yearly basis, we were going to assign a enumerated evaluation of what we felt as a community was appropriate levels of growth in lodging and and commercial area and new residential units. That allotment concept has been around in some way, shape, or form since 1977. It has, continues to serve as the basis of the growth management chapter of the land use code. And, you know, going back to that time, we set a growth limit and that 1977 limit, we were going to allow 39 new units, 18 new lodging pillows, and commercial building potential of roughly 24,000 square feet. And and again, thinking about growth over time. 2024, most recently, we've got three, 13 free market residential units, 112 lodging pillows that are available annually and commercial net leasable expansion of up to 33,000 square feet. We've had lots of conversations with council over the last, I would say, five years, six years since I've been involved in in long-range planning with the city about the fact that we really haven't been using these allotments. We're simply, particularly in the residential area. And just to be clear, allotments right now, in terms of what we require, are for new lots for single-family and duplex development or new multifamily units. The redevelopment of properties, the renovations of properties, those do not sort of require additional allotments. You know, unless we're triggering demolition, that's a that's a different topic. But in terms of new subdivisions, in terms of new multifamily, we really haven't been using these allotments. And to be honest, the same is true of our commercial and lodging allotments. The last real use of our lodging allotments were the the Lift One Lodge and Gorsuch House Amon projects.
Yeah, so just to bring it back, that's sort of like the detailed sort of view of why we have GMQS, the history, sort of where it is today. And that brings it sort of back to the House Bill because, again, this House Bill 231255 is invalidating just the residential allotment system within our GMQS. So again, the House Bill, which, you know, we set this two-year temporary anti-growth sort of law to lock our land use code into time, which was a provision within the House Bill. We did that last summer, so summer of 2023. We're still within that two-year period. So again, we're just sort of responding in a timely manner to the bill. So the approach that staff took, and you're not meant to be able to read this, Tori.
Man, I was getting really bad.
I saw your reaction. The response that staff took was to break up every subsection within GMQS and do a detailed review of what each subsection was saying and if it complied or if it was out of compliance with what House Bill 1255 provisions detailed. So we kind of went through line by line, looking at what was important within GMQS, what are the things that we absolutely need to keep? You know, are there policy outcomes that are differing if we, you know, eliminate our allotment for residential unit system? And ultimately, you know, what we decided was GMQS is a very important section within our land use code. You know, it's got things sort of baked into it that were not perhaps intended to be sort of layered into it when it was first created in 77, including, you know, our affordable housing mitigation, our fee and lieu, change in use, multifamily replacement, and just sort of our baseline inclusionary zoning. So as a response, and I had sort of brought this to y'all during first reading, was that we decided to take a very targeted approach to the House Bill and do very finite red lines rather than sort of blow up GMQS to figure out how we wanted to respond to the House Bill at this time. So what staff found was that there needed to be red lines to two chapters, so obviously GMQS and then powers and duties within Planning and Zoning Commission. So what we did was first remove the residential development within the city, which is a table in GMQS, and that is just setting the baseline for what the annual growth rate should be for free market residential development. So we first just removed that in its entirety. And subsequently, we removed all mentions of the residential allotment. So we just went through very finite with, you know, making sure that if there was examples of how, you know, allotments were converted or any mention of residential allotments, we just remove that or we change them to commercial and lodging as we will continue to have those in GMQS for now. And then this is the one red line within the powers and duties of Planning and Zoning Commission. So they were able to grant allotments for residential. We're just removing that power now that we don't have the residential allotments to grant. And then the one other GMQS edit that we did do was reintroduce the category four restriction for commercial and lodge mitigation, which was unintentionally removed during the 2021-2022 moratorium. We had introduced that during first reading. So that was just included back into GMQS. And just to reiterate, this does not change any policy outcomes to Title 26 or GMQS as a whole. So happy to take questions, but staff recommends council approval of ordinance 14, series of 2024.
Questions at this time? Well, it's a public hearing. Hang on one second. This is a public hearing.